Call any more, please, guys. If you can have a moment of silence to keep our thoughts and prayers, our military, law enforcement, law enforcement response always return home safe. Thank you. Please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered a legitimate protest stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the public office meeting as well, the listed public meeting has been published in the homeowners' trading, current news and Star Wars newspapers, and posted on the Middlesex County website, as well as on the bulletin board in the Middlesex County Sheriff's Building, every forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, which shall be entered into the meeting minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Scott and Barbara?
Here.
County Commissioner Canning? County Commissioner Koppel? County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Marn? County Commissioner Thurm?
Here.
County Commissioner Dr. Reyes?
Here. Okay. Kelsso, do we have any resolutions to be made? I'm sorry. We have several resolutions.
Recognizing Francis Frisco as the honorary of the town in Flagton.
Is there motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Scott and Barbara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canning? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Thurm?
Here.
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Reyes?
Yes. Okay, correspondents?
Each Commissioner will provide you with a list of correspondents received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept filed in the office of the Public Board of Representatives.
Is there motion to accept the correspondence, if you would?
Second.
Tony Faber?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Minutes for approval.
The regular meeting counts on Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty p.m.
Is there motion to approve the minutes, to move?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Scott and Barbara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canning? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Thurm?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Reyes?
Yes. What's the commission? Commissioner Tyrell Dallas, Scott and Barbara?
None of two before the review, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Nothing to write, Director.
Right. Commissioner Chanel Scott McCollum?
I've nothing to write, sir.
Commissioner Charles Tamar? To move forward. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kelsso, any resolutions to be made?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be borne?
There are none.
This time I open up the meeting to the public to comment on resolutions only listing. You state your name and address in five minutes.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners, Charlie Croweville, one four three City Am Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. I'm also the editor of New Brunswick Today. I wanted to ask about the CAEPOR report. This is twelve forty-three. Can somebody tell me what kind of items are in this report?
I can. So the CAEPOR report is our annual performance report for homes, D E G and E S G. So that's our, I think it's for reporting period, June first, twenty-four to July first, twenty-five. We are going to be doing, so it will be published, it'll be published on the county website in the next week. And then we'll be doing a fifteen day commentary plus it will be published.
Got it. Can you just tell me, is there affordable housing, one of the goals in that report, or one of the metrics?
Yes, that would be tied to home.
Okay. And like, is there a specific number of units that the county is reporting?
So I don't have specifics on the report, but it'll be published.
All right. That's all on the resolutions, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and I'll have five minutes.
Hello, I am Catherine Hyde, and I live at one twenty-one Modern Township, in one of them. I need to work here. At the evening, well, I'm a resident of the Blossom Park community, and I've lived in my room for-
Excuse me, ma'am, but this portion is just to speak on the resolutions that we have listed on the agenda. And after we adopt them, then you'll have an opportunity to speak on anything else.
Okay, I did ask the clerk of the board ahead of time, and so I don't know if what I'd like to speak on is on your agenda.
It is on the agenda, please.
I don't believe it's on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay, it wasn't put on the agenda, okay, so this will be in the public portion afterwards?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Does anyone have to run anything separately? No? Okay. Mr. Kelsso?
Yes, Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-five dash twelve twenty-five to the resolution twenty-five dash twelve seventeen.
Is there motion to adopt a consent agenda? Or to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Scott and Barbara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Canning? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Thurm?
Yes.
County Commissioners, Dr. Reyes?
Yes. Okay. I open up the meeting to the public. Anyone has any comments?
Excuse me, miss?
You can come up now.
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, I introduced myself previously. I'm here to, in a respectful way, to urge the Commissions to please, let's see if I got my things here. I want to do it. Yes. To pass a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act, which is currently being born in state legislature. This piece of legislation codifies and expands the state directive currently in place, which limits local law enforcement from collaborating with federal immigration authorities beyond what is required by law. The Essex County Board of Commissioners, as well as fifteen towns in both literary counties, have issued such resolutions, including Atlantic City, Springfield, Chatham, Plington, Kearney, Leonea, Naperville, Madison, Worstedown, Patterson, Plainfield, Princeton, South Martin, Trenton, and Hudson County. This legislation isn't about politics, it's about people. It ensures that local law enforcement does not act as federal immigration agents, and that our local resources are used to protect public safety, not to tear families apart. There are stories of the immigrant mother who drew a map on the back of her child's hand so that he could find his way home in case they were separated, of a sixteen-year-old girl who couldn't register for school because both of her parents were in detention centers, and a seventeen-year-old teenage boy who has to figure out how to make a life here without his parents, who were both deported. We all want a safe town, and a safe county, and a safe state. But when undocumented immigrants are afraid to report crimes, cooperate with police, or seek medical help because of the potential detention, arrest, or deportation, everyone is less safe. The Immigrant Trust Act restores that trust. It builds a firewall between immigration enforcement and local law enforcement, so that people, regardless of status, can come forward when something is wrong. Just to be clear, this act does not prevent our Monroe or New Brunswick or any other of our police officers from doing their jobs. On the contrary, it allows them to do the jobs they were trained for. It simply ensures they're not deputized by ICE, which would otherwise strain resources, erode public trust, and make their work more difficult. An enactment of this legislation into law could even result in lower crime rates, better cooperation with police, and healthier community relationships. Support for a resolution is also a human statement. It says that, in our county, we value fairness, we value the hard-working immigrants who are our neighbors, coworkers, and friends, and who contribute to the local and state economies, and that we do not believe that fear and intimidation should be tools of public policy. In our county, we have a chance to stand with other communities in the state on the side of safety, trust, and human dignity. And I ask that this body will please join Senator Greg Greenstein, who has signed on as co-sponsor of the bill, and pass a resolution affirming this county's support for the Immigrant Trust Act. May your action continue the momentum that is gathering towards the passage of this bill during the lame-duck session of the legislature and its sliding into law by Governor Murphy. And I do give some information, yes, of how other paperwork. And I believe there are other people who would like to speak to the bill as well.
Thank you. I could tell you now that if we don't take a position on any legislation that has no, we have no jurisdiction over. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Yirfan Kalaja. I live at one hundred Kyler Road in Princeton, but I work in Islam. And I spend most of my waking hours in Middlesex County. I'm here to urge you to join Essex and Hudson Counties, plus a couple dozen municipalities, in passing a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act. To that end, let me remind you of an unfortunate event that took place in this county last year. On New Year's Day, twenty twenty-four, the Edison Police Department, at the behest of Edison Mayor Sam Joshi, detained a busload of migrants at Edison Rail Station, traveling from El Paso, Texas, to New York, a forty-hour trip. The migrants were confined to the bus for the duration of the detention, refused their right to exit, even to go to the bathroom, interrogated, then literally driven out of town and told not to come back. It sounds like something out of a bad movie, but it's fact, reported in a reputable paper. No legal basis was, or ever has, been cited for this operation. The closest any officer came was to assert that the people on the bus looked Hispanic, comparing them to an invading army, and making some stupid, unfunny jokes at their expense. According to Edison's finest, a couple dozen unarmed, exhausted refugees on a bus were the military equivalent of the Red Army. It all seems too dumb to be true. I didn't come up with it. Think of it. Had the Immigrant Trust Act been enforced, none of this would have happened. None of it would have happened. Every part of this operation, starting with Joshi's directive, would clearly have been illegal, and have given the Attorney General a legal basis for preemption and response. What we got instead, in this county, in twenty twenty-four, was a scene straight out of The Jim Crow South, with the Edison Rail Station standing in for the Greyhound bus station at Jackson, Mississippi, and Sam Joshi standing in for Ross Fournette. An ITA resolution gives you, us, a double opportunity to right a past wrong that took place in this county and to prevent the next one from happening. Opportunities like this don't come that often, and they don't take an encore when they do. So my suggestion is, take it. Better to act while you can than regret that you didn't. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Is there motion to close the public?
I'd like to speak. No, I'll pick somebody else.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Jenny Pisaki. I live in Cranberry Township. I also work in Monroe Township. And I've been a member, I have lived in Middlesex County for seventeen years. I too am here asking this board to please consider writing a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. On October third, the Camden Center for Law and Social Justice sent out a letter notifying the community at large that ICE was sending out information to youth, not only in Camden, but in other cities of diverse populations, notifying the youth that something called Freaky Friday was coming up. This program encourages unaccompanied children and youths, UCs, to, who are as young as fourteen years of age or older, to self-deport. According to the Camden Center, these letters were strong and threatening, stating that the youth would be detained as soon as they turned eighteen. It also stated that the federal government would be willing to offer them two thousand five hundred dollars to return to their home country. It threatened enforced deportation of parents if the youth didn't follow the letter. These letters supposedly were sent to youth all over the state. I don't know for a fact, I will be honest, I don't know for a fact whether or not there are youth in Middlesex County that have received this. The reason I'm bringing this up is, it isn't necessary to divulge your status when you enroll your child in school. It is not necessary to divulge your status when you use a hospital. I used to be a domestic violence hearing officer in Hudson County. Hudson County, which has already signed a resolution. And when I was a domestic violence hearing officer in that county, we had folks who were afraid to appear in court, survivors of domestic violence, because they were afraid that their status might be divulged, and that could jeopardize their safety and their children's safety. I beg you to please consider, all we are asking is that a letter in support of the Immigrant Trust Act be sent to the state legislature during the lame-duck period, letting the rest of the legislature know that every county, every citizen, is under threat without it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Witt. I live in Highland Park. I'm also the coordinator of the DIRE hotline. DIRE stands for deportation and immigration responsive people. It serves people throughout the state of New Jersey, but also especially people here in Middlesex County. The people who call us are generally immigrants who have a family member who has been detained by ICE, or who are looking for legal advice because they fear being detained. And since the Trump administration began, the calls have gone up enormously. I want you to know that just in the last couple of days, we've had at least five that I know of people picked up right here in New Brunswick, off the street, when they were in vehicles. In one case, the windows were broken out of the car by ICE. In all cases, the people picked up were on their way to work in the morning. Which is obvious that they were on the way to work in the morning because they were in vans or had construction stuff and so forth. So therefore, it just shows you that no one actually believes that ICE is pursuing extremely violent criminals, whatever you want to call them, early in the morning among people on their way to work. It's not generally who you pursue if you are looking for some violent gang members or something. Not the time. So, so that is the case, that we are having a big problem here. But fortunately, in general, to my knowledge, in general, police have not been collaborating with ICE, which has been going, you know, for a number of years now, they have not been assisting ICE in these kinds of operations. And there have been, of course, restrictions from the Immigrant Trust Act, from the Attorney General's office. But that was not always the case in the past. Some years ago, people would simply be driving and have a minor traffic incident, maybe a speeding ticket or something minor, and they would be stopped, pulled over, and the police would actually contact ICE and turn them in. And it led to people being extremely fearful for their lives. Because, of course, this leads to family separation, people losing everything as a result of a simple traffic incident. But fortunately, this body, as some of you remember, some years ago, actually played a leadership role in the state and passed a fair, a pretty strong policy for the county of Middlesex, eliminating, you know, basically saying, hey, we're not going to have the Sheriff's Department or the jail doing a lot of collaboration with ICE. And there were very strict things that were set out to prevent that from occurring. And that really set a model for the state. Unfortunately, the Immigrant Trust Act that the Attorney General put in place was actually weaker than the policy you all passed. Your policy was better at the time. And I realize that you all apparently rolled back your policy to the Attorney General's policy. However, it made a big difference. And it was very important to the people of Middlesex County to realize that folks here, the county, actually supported the community and actually opposed this kind of actions with the collaboration. And helps actually people feel a little more trustful of being in the community, being able to walk the streets, not looking over their shoulder every minute, thinking that just local police might come after them. It made a big difference. I can remember, some years ago, some of you may remember, there was a detention center in the Middlesex County Jail. You know, over a hundred detainees there. I used to go there to visit people. That was stopped. Again, that was a smart move by the sheriff of Middlesex County to end that, to recognize that using your resources to put up, ta ta.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name's Tony Faber. I live at eleven eighty Raritan Road in Scotch Plains. I've lived eight years of my life in Middlesex County, and I'm a lifelong New Jersey resident. I'd like to emphasize the point that has been alluded to, but maybe not said directly, which is, speaks to why a resolution is so important, and why I think you should consider going beyond the policy of not commenting on legislation that is before you, or that is not directly being implemented by you. And that's that what ICE is doing is not just immoral, but it's actually illegal in many cases. We see extraordinary things happening, and when I say extraordinary, I don't mean that as a compliment. We see, as many examples have been pointed out to, blatant violations of the Fourth Amendment, asking people for their papers, not because there's any probable cause, but because they look a particular way. We see blatant disregard for court orders. We see this in Chicago, where district judges say that tear gas can't be used on protesters of ICE, and they use it anyway. We see blatant disregard for people in ICE custody. We see people dying in ICE custody because they're denied life-saving medical care. We see corruption, where people are forced into labor inside of ICE facilities. All this and more, I could spend the whole five minutes just talking about the things that ICE is doing that's illegal, but I don't have to tell you because you can see it on the news every single day. So given the extraordinary things that ICE is doing, it falls on us, are we going to become complicit in that? And if, for instance, Jack Sidorelli becomes governor, he has said on the first day of his administration, he will have local cops and governments collaborating with ICE. And that will not just use up resources and make us all less safe and brutalize people who don't deserve to be brutalized, but it'll make us complicit in who knows what ICE decides to do. Local communities, local cops, will be taking part in things we can't even imagine yet. It's a scary situation. And what we can do is everything we can to resist illegal activity of the federal government. And this includes, at the very least, separating ourselves and not allowing local governments and local police to work with federal agents. Now, none of this, by the way, stops anything having to do with apprehending of criminals. But as has been noted, this, of course, isn't about the apprehending of criminals, it's about terrorizing people. And that people may extend beyond people who are here without citizenship. It may extend to many more people as well, if we do not step up and act. So I invite you to consider that we are in extraordinary times, and perhaps an extraordinary vote is called for. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public? Can you check something?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Robby Duncan. I am a resident of Highland Park. I've been in Middlesex County for twenty years now. And I'd like to point out a couple, so I think that people have spoken very eloquently and made a lot of really important and great points about this. I want to reiterate just a couple of things. First of all, immigrants, regardless of status, are the backbone of this country, are part of our communities, they're the lifeblood of this country. And right now, what is happening is horrific. It is illegal, it is inhumane. So there's a choice here, in terms of which side of history we want to be on. I understand that there may be difficulties or technical challenges, but this is a moral decision that everyone has to make. How do you want to be, how do you want this county to be remembered in Britain and history around the horrifying events that are happening around us? The raids, the letters to the youth, can you imagine? A fourteen-year-old getting a letter like that? It's unreal. So I think that there are other counties that have done it, so the technical difficulties are standing in the way, seem to be something that can be resolved. I think that right now, there isn't even a hearing for this. Like, no one is willing to move on it. Honestly, out of cowardice and fear, I don't know, but this is something that is so urgent, is affecting so many lives. And whatever is happening to our, to immigrant neighbors and people in our community, that is going to ripple to non-immigrants, just so that we're clear. It already has. There are people with green cards, that are residents, that have been detained, deported. Very, very, very few of them, of the people that have been detained and deported, have any criminal issues. So this isn't about criminals, they've already said that. This group, this commission, and other commissions like it, need to push the legislator to move on a hearing and not wait. There's no reason to wait. So your support of the Immigrant Trust Act, passing a resolution, pushing the legislature with the power and privilege that you have to do so, something that many of the people in these affected communities do not have. You're here with the power that you have to, you can make a difference. Take it, make a difference, push on. Push on this. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Tiffany Broderick. I'm a resident of Metatchen. Do you need my whole address? I've lived in Middlesex for quite a number of years. And I'm extremely nervous, I'm sorry. I am also a member of DIRE and some other organizations. I currently am spending my life at a full-time job. I don't get paid for responding to the fallout of catastrophe, grief, and fear be written on other human beings in our community. We seem to have a spineless state legislature right now that we don't have access to. There's things they can sit out for the summer and not have a hearing on something that's really important. Because, yes, some people are criminals, but the rest are just people. And standing up for cruelty inflicted on other people is never, ever wrong. People are living in fear. American citizens married to people are being ripped away from them. They have no rights. Apparently, you can't love who you want to love and be who you want to be with. This is the world we live in today. And I'm sure everyone in here is aware of the atrocities happening around the country. I'm not here saying Middlesex County can't fix that. I understand that. But since we don't have access to our state legislature right now, they don't want to hear us. This has been sitting there in a lame duck session all year long. So this is democracy in action, and this is how it works. We start from the bottom up, each town to the county, and we ask for your support in an Immigrant Trust Act resolution to try and push the state to show that there's some support here for humanity. Having some kid smashed out of his car on Route 10 the other day is not only awful, it's a public safety hazard. And then they leave the car there, abandon it for the local police to be their problem. They don't call nobody. And the erosion in the trust of law enforcement is seriously crippling for the state and the community. I deal with law enforcement, ICE out. You know, no one wants to identify themselves. You don't know who they're with. Are they local? Are they state? Are they lying? Are they dressed up as? This is so dangerous for New Jersey because it makes us not trust our actual heroes that protect the community. You don't know who you're dealing with. This is scary times. This is scary times. And I stand here as I care about other human beings and their fear. I'm a restaurant manager. A lot of my staff, they're all varying degrees of legal, work visas, married to US citizens, green cards. And they're all just as terrified because they don't ask questions. They stop you because of how you look, you fit the part. They take you, and they ask questions later. This is not okay. This is not America. This is not America. We do things the right way. And I know we can't fix it. This isn't the forum for fixing the problem we find ourselves in. Just asking for some solidarity from the state of New Jersey and Middlesex County to show support for the suffering of other people in their community. Stand with your community. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Charlie Bradville. I'm speaking to you once again. I had a meeting with the administration, and I think at the last meeting I followed up, I was told that I would have some form of follow-up on that meeting by this meeting. Did I miss that? Is there an update? Can I point that out?
Unfortunately, Mr. Palomino is not here tonight, but John, I don't know if you could follow up on that? Yeah, maybe.
Right. And if, you know, let's say I don't get the follow-up by the next meeting, are you going to have a public comment period where I can bring it up again?
That's right. The next meeting we have is we're just paying invoices and bills.
So you won't allow the public to comment on general matters?
You could call the office at any time you want, Charlie.
Okay. I think it's unfortunate that you, as a board, have rolled back the public's ability to speak to you at your meetings. You know this because you were there back in 2008, right? You became what we call a freeholder in 2008, right? And you remember that the public would get 10 minutes to speak at every meeting, including the REorg and the last one of the year. You didn't have these, you know, meetings where you would purposely not hear from the public. I don't know whose idea that was, but it started under your tenure, and you ought to be held accountable for it. I noticed tonight that none of the commissioners had any reports to share. What is the reason that the commissioners don't have any reports to share today?
Because they chose that since the last meeting, that really maybe there wasn't anything of real significance to report. They're always in constant contact with their department heads and their managers that come under their jurisdiction.
Just so happens nothing.
They're still working every day in contact with the residents and the businesses of Middlesex County, performing the duties of commissioners.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make a suggestion that you meet with some of the advocates who spoke tonight. Because if you think there's nothing serious going on or nothing important has happened in the past 10 days, you're wrong. There's a lot going on, and it's very, very serious. And I think that folks made a lot of good points and arguments tonight to you. And so I think what you've got to do, like you did 15 years ago and like you did eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, is meet with these advocates and hear them out. And, you know, I think the more that you learn, the more that you'll agree with them, that you need to do something as basic and as simple as signing a resolution of support for the Immigrant Trust Act. I mean, I know you say you'd never act on items that are beyond your jurisdiction, but this is your job to advocate for us residents. And, you know, I for one am asking you to pass such a resolution. I know there have been things I've asked you to do before that you've said aren't in your jurisdiction, you're not going to do. Please, start looking outside of your jurisdiction for things you can influence. Because in case you didn't, you know, I brought this up before. You've got your party controlling, our party controlling the legislature and the governor. These are people that, you know, in some cases hail from this county, and you know very well, you've known for years. You could at least bring this up to great call for them. Would you be willing to do that?
This board feels sympathy for what's happening around the country, okay? And we respect that and expect people to be treated with dignity and respect. There are certain limitations that we have. There are certain jurisdictions that come under us. And we don't get involved in advocating for a certain law or bill that's in the legislature or in Congress.
Sorry, I want to clarify. You've never advocated for a piece of legislation, federal or state, in your time as a commissioner?
We've done it individually.
Okay, can you do that on this?
That's something that each individual commissioner would have to consider.
Will you agree to meet with the advocates?
We're here, they could call our officers at any time.
And you'll meet with them?
We'll talk with them.
So you'll meet with them?
This isn't our only function of coming here. Everybody here also has other responsibilities too.
Okay, I just didn't hear anything in the reports, so this is an important issue.
Our commissioners will meet or will speak or communicate with anyone that wants to communicate with them via email or via telephone call.
Okay, well, go the extra mile and meet with them because they care a lot about this. And I know that they know firsthand why we need an Immigrant Trust Act in New Jersey, and you should listen to them. I hope you'll add public comment to your next meeting so that you can hear your people from your county.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Question or close?
Oh, I don't have a question.
Come on up. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sure. Hello, my name is Anna Fall Shavitz. I am a lifelong resident of Middlesex County, currently residing at Street 29, Davis Street in South Amboy. I don't think I need to tell anyone in this room right now that what's happening in America is not normal. We know that, we see that every day, we read it on the news. But what I do feel the need to ask or say here tonight is, you know, what is being done to protect the immigrant community in Middlesex County? We have two warehouse raids in Edison. We have some very highly populated immigrant communities who runs with North Amboy, et cetera. I understand that the board has other responsibilities. That's fair. I think this is very important because what is more important right now than fighting fascism in this country and in our state and in our county? I mean, as people, we bond together to try to influence, you know, people like you guys who have a little more power than us. And what we're seeing is devastating. Want an Immigrant Trust Act to be passed, the resolution to be passed. And I just wanted to add that I was at the Essex County Commissioners' meeting last month where they did, right in front of us, vote to pass an Immigrant Trust Act resolution. And they did something similar in Hudson County,